So why don't we get started? So thank you all for coming. We're going to be recording this and putting it on the web, but we'll stop before questions so people can feel uninhibited and answer their questions. So thank you for coming. What I thought I'd do is use this opportunity to really give you sort of a progress report of where we've been and the path we've been on for the last two and a half years. Obviously, as you know, RBHS was established in 2012 by the New Jersey Medical and Health Sciences Restructuring Act and became the Healthcare Clinical Division of Rutgers on July 1st, 2013. When I came now, two and a half years ago, what I stated then and have stated repeatedly since is that my goal is to build one of the best academic health centers in the country within Amazon One. And what I want to do is basically give you a progress report on the journey we've been on and where we stand, we're certainly not there yet, but the progress that we've made in that interim. So it is likely that our healthcare system has never gone through such rapid technological and organizational change in its history. Certainly, we're all living that in terms of the enormous changes underway on healthcare. And to keep in mind, to achieve our institutional goals, we need to avoid a mentality of catching up, and we need to take advantage of this changing environment to vault ahead of the competition. So there is so much change underway, we don't need to worry about catching up because you'll never catch up because while you tried, other people are moving ahead. We need to look past where things will be and leap ahead to be able to get there. And that's been underpinning a lot of what we've been doing. Importantly, a vision is not just a picture of what could be, it's an appeal to our better selves, a call to become something more. So to remind you, this is what RBHS is. Our schools are on the left-hand side. Let me see if I can use the pointer to point there, the mouse to point. The schools are here on the left-hand side, the centers and institutes are here. U B H C has a very large behavioral healthcare unit, and the new Rutgers Health established this year that we'll talk a little bit more about. Overall, our healthcare, overall, the overall budget of RBHS is about $1.6 billion a year. We have about 1,000 clinical faculty divided, as you can show there, and our clinical revenue is about $700 million, as you can see on the right-hand side, to give you again a sense of scale of the organization that we're talking about here. So what I want to review with you is certain steps, strategic planning. We went through the beginning to address faculty morale issues, the financial turnaround, internal integration, external partnerships, RBHS leadership appointments and searches, and our sense of fiscal '17 goals with a clear sense of leaving that open for discussion as well, if there are other things people think we should be working on. First, strategic planning. We went through a process, as you recall, our goal again is to build one of the best academic health centers in the country. The purpose of the RBHS strategic plan was to focus on RBHS-wide activities, complementing but not replacing school and professional-based activities. So the focus of the strategic plan was on what cuts across the different schools. Obviously, each school has its own strategic plan within that. Developed with input from more than 5,000 faculty, staff, and students, Strategic Planning Committee was chaired by Bob DePaola, it's now chaired by Seal Feldman. Key issues that were identified in the beginning of that were to break down silos and build collaborative teams across schools, programs, and campuses, to build on current strengths while developing new ones, to address faculty departures and losses of recent years, to create incentives to reward productivity and excellence, to make strategic investments in faculty, to create a culture of academic excellence, to develop a culture of accountability, and to address the financial performance and improvement in contrast to what we picked up that you'll hear about. Signature programs that emerged as programs that we thought could be among the best, where we could be among the best in the country within five years were cancer, environmental and occupational health, infection and inflammation, and neuroscience. We also thought it was important as a signature area to consider community health and health systems. We called that an emerging signature area because certainly in terms of extramural funding, we weren't going to be among the best in the country within five years. On the other hand, it was of enormous interest to the faculty. Fully 50% of the faculty in the survey expressed that as an interest and clearly is central to our mission and goal as an entity. Complementary programs, areas that needed to be developed to synergize with the signature areas, and were clinical research, drug discovery and development, informatics, and public health, including global health. So the goal was, for example, to recruit people doing clinical research in cancer, clinical research in neuroscience, and so on, going forward. So these were seen as complementary matrix entities. Educational initiatives are listed here, and I won't read through all of them. Clinical initiatives, and we'll talk about a number of these, branding, clinical partnerships, accountable care organization, patient access initiative, and finally, community service. In addition, other key initiatives included integration, both among our schools and across Rutgers, that is between RBHS and the rest of Rutgers, including joint degree programs, professional and continuing education, public health, including global health, merger of nursing schools, joint clinical chairs, designing a multi-professional practice plan, reorganizing and strengthening our PhD programs, reorganizing basic sciences across Rutgers, and looking at the roles of centers and institutes. Finally, and I think this is finally for the strategic plan, other enabling structures or advancing institutional stature, faculty development, and facilities issues, and in terms of financial development strategies, addressing RBHS administrative challenges and financial improvement strategies, and funding the strategic plan. Our goal, and again, this was developed, wording developed as part of the strategic plan, was to be recognized as one of the best academic health centers in the United States, known for its education, research, clinical care, and commitment to improving access to healthcare and reducing healthcare disparities. This will be achieved through dedication to elevated standards of excellence and innovation, interprofessional collaboration and integration, and deep engagement with the community. And obviously, you've seen this, you're part of both developing it and you see it posted now in buildings all around campus. Turning now to beginning to address faculty morale. A new contract was signed for the first time in six years in November '15. I won't read through the terms of the contract, but included within it were also a new research incentive program, new appointments and promotion criteria, which for the first time set up five tracks so that everybody clearly identifying the five different jobs that are really inherent in being faculty, and so everyone can be promoted in their jobs, recognizing their jobs. You know, people who are full-time practitioners, for example, could be in the professional practice track and could achieve promotion in that track, which in the old system, they never would have been able to be promoted. So the idea again was had five separate tracks, people sort themselves, that's what their expectations are, and that's what they'd be judged on going forward. All RBHS faculty have now selected one of the new faculty tracks. In addition, given the success of Robert Wood Johnson Medical School financially in the interim, a new one-year clinical incentive program has now been negotiated with the union and approved and will pay out in the next few months. Other relevant things, corporate integrity agreement. The Office of the Inspector General of Department of HHS has notified RBHS that it fulfilled its requirements. RBHS was released from the reporting requirements, though we continue the robust healthcare compliance program developed over the prior six years. Faculty mentoring program. We now provide faculty with mentoring to inspire a career of research, scholarship, teaching, and clinical care. It was striking to me in coming here that mentoring wasn't part of the culture here. There's a huge literature out there showing the importance of mentoring in the success in academia. You need to have mentors, and in business just as much as academia, but you need to have mentors in order to be able to succeed. We now require the naming of mentors in all offer letters for new faculty. RBHS provosts appoint a mentoring committee chaired by Anne Mosenthal and Kita Demasie. They in turn have led a multi-school effort involving representatives from all the schools. A faculty survey demonstrated support for building a culture of mentorship within RBHS, and parenthetically, it was nice to see a dramatic improvement in faculty morale evidenced there as well. Shortly after I came here, there was a survey done. Faculty morale was awful. This survey showed a dramatic improvement, clearly a ways to go yet, but a dramatic improvement from what it had been two and a half years before. In May 4th, there was a day-long symposium building a culture of mentoring, and a women's leadership symposium is planned for 2017. In addition, RBHS, one of the things that has been lacking here historically has been the cultivation of our own faculty. So RBHS faculty are now participating in national leadership development programs, including the ELAM program, specifically medical leaders, medical school leaders, AMC Council of Deans Fellowship, the HERS Leadership Academy, and the Rutgers Leadership Academy that it runs. The others are sort of short courses, partly at home, partly travel. Rutgers Leadership Academy is a multi-school effort to train leaders across the entire Financial turnaround. Upon my arrival in December '13, I found that RBHS was budgeted for fiscal '14 that year to have a balanced budget, but in fact, now one quarter of the way into that year was on a trajectory to have a fiscal '14 deficit of $54 million, despite a budgeted, balanced budget having been submitted a quarter, three months before. What this shows you is what happened. So we inherited, as I mentioned, a budget of what looked like a deficit of $54 million for fiscal '14. In fact, fiscal '14 was closed with a deficit of $20 million, and fiscal '15 was budgeted with a deficit of $24 million and closed in the black. Moving to fiscal '16, we were handed at that point $50 million of additional expenses. Part of that was the new union contract, part of that was state cutbacks, part of that were costs from RCM, multiple different parts of that. So we went into fiscal '16, trying to get the mouse again here, went into fiscal '16 with a budget of, for the year we just finished, a budgeted deficit of $18.5 million. So again, a handed $50 million of extra expenses. We had a budgeted deficit of $18.5 million, and we closed at what we thought was going to be in the black and actually ends up now, as of yesterday, we now know is very in the black. So we're delighted that we closed '16 very positively. It is to a very substantial degree due to the accomplishments of this school and the dramatic turnaround that the school has been through in the last couple of years. And now, for fiscal '17, we have submitted a breakeven budget across RBHS. How did we achieve that? Part of it was some accounting corrections, part of it is expenditure controls, a significant part was increasing revenue, increasing clinical revenue and increasing grant revenue. So if you look at our extramural awards, as you go from fiscal '14 to '15, our extramural awards, not applications, but actual funded awards, went up 22.6%. That was '14 to '15. As you look at '15 to '16, comparing the first two quarters of both years, it went up another 25%. These are awards at a time that federal dollars are essentially flat. A real credit to the faculty and the accomplishments of the faculty to be able to be that successful and that competitive. And so if you look here at trends over time, again, let me see if I can get the mouse again, here it is, you can see the drop to 2013 and the increase thereafter. And so the, and if you look, and the red is Robert Wood Johnson Medical School, you know, in 2013, it was $22 million in awards, $33.5 million in '14, $33 million in '15, and the '16 data looks better yet. And so that the, a significant part of the improvement was improved grant revenue. In addition, the other significant part, and we'll talk about it in the clinical section, was significant increase in clinical revenue in addition. Internal integration. We've had a series of joint chair appointments as we begin to integrate across our schools. Bruce Hafti had been joint chair, that is chair, of the Department of Radiology and Oncology in both medical schools before I arrived. Sahil Jhaubet, who had been chair of neurology here, obviously, has become chair as well of Robert Wood Johnson Medical School. Chen Lu, who I see is in the audience there, was recruited from University of Florida to be chair at both schools, both medical schools. And Charlie President Giacomo was chair of the Department of Neurosurgery, New Jersey Medical School, and was appointed as interim chair here at Robert Wood. Other integration, we merged the College and School of Nursing, two different schools about a mile away from each other in Newark. We reorganized the School of Public Health versus the medical schools, taking departments out of the medical, both medical schools, taking faculty out in the process, who really belonged more appropriately in the School of Public Health. And we reorganized the Continuing Education Office. When we walked in, we had a joint Continuing Education Office in the chancellor's office that was giving continuing education in each of the different professions, and each of the separate schools was doing continuing education as well, all of them losing money and competing against each other in the process. So we went through a process where the two, the office in the chancellor's office has evolved to become a joint medical school office, the two medical schools only, and not duplicating what's in the medical schools, not duplicating each other, and then each of the other schools, dentistry, pharmacy, whatever, have taken it into the schools to do themselves. Other statewide integration is clinical integration. Why do we want to integrate clinically? One is to achieve scale, simply to be big enough. Right now, each of the two medical schools clinically tends, is small compared to most medical schools. You lose one key person, you lose all service line. There's no backup, and you don't have all those subspecialties that you should have. Fortunately, the schools are mirror images in many ways, so they're complementary to each other, but each of them are small. Each of them is the size, is half the size of an average medical school, not in class size, not in medical school class size, but in clinical base and financial base and in otherwise. They're each the size of a half of many other medical schools. Excellence, to achieve a level of excellence and scale that otherwise wouldn't be achieved. Competitive intelligence, meaning data capabilities, both clinically and population-based, as we look toward a world of population health. We need to deliver value care, quality care, that requires an enormous amount of data infrastructure that really has, minimally exists here, didn't exist at all in Newark. That requires a huge investment in informatics and in IT. That requires cash, that requires scale to be able to afford all of that. Optimizing value as part of that, as we move to value-based care and alignment with our, the consolidating hospital systems, that is, the hospital systems that are all consolidating around us as, you know, Meridian comes together with Hackensack, obviously RWJA comes together with Barnabas, and Virtu is the third system that will probably survive. The charge of this process was to develop an integrated interprofessional practice model and support, and a supporting organizational structure that will thrive in this rapidly changing healthcare environment, will preserve the academic mission of Rutgers, enable Rutgers to speak with one voice in payer and hospital contract negotiations, giving us enormously more clout in being able to get higher rates from our insurers for the same care, maximizing return on investment and be economically sustainable, minimizing tax, legal, and insurance risk, and maintaining provider incentives for performance. The model that has been decided on, and this was an 18-month process led by Vicente Gracias, is a three-part model. One is Rutgers Health Group as the core. Rutgers Health Group is intended as a large, there it is, as a large integrated multi-specialty medical, dental, and nursing practice, a new Rutgers-affiliated nonprofit entity, a single infrastructure, a corporation within Rutgers, though owned only by Rutgers, but a separate corporation, with accountability for clinical practice performance, and the ability to move and deploy more flexibly than the large state infrastructure that is Rutgers University. Around that, but not completely overlapping, is Rutgers Health. The clinical brand of Rutgers, you know, Rutgers Health really has two primary roles. One is the clinical brand of Rutgers, and I'll talk about that in a minute. The other is as an advisory body, to me in my role as Executive Vice President for Health Affairs, shaping key policies impacting all health professionals. So as you see, it completely incorporates Rutgers Health Group, but incorporates other things in addition to Rutgers Health Group. So for example, the School of Social Work, the Graduate School of Applied Psychology, student health. Basically, the Rutgers Health is intended to include all the patient-facing pieces of Rutgers, both those within RBHS and outside RBHS. There's no reason in the world why we would expect different quality of care to be delivered in the different parts of Rutgers. And last, is Rutgers Health Network. This includes Rutgers Health Group and also our hospital and community partners. This is intended as a clinically-integrated network. It'll include our affiliated hospitals and groups that meet hospital requirements and allow value-based contracting so that we can go forward to the insurers now, not only with our, you have 500 docs, with New Jersey Medical School, there's 1,000 docs, but add to that a group of physicians, other physicians, like the private docs here at Robert Wood and other, and the hospitals as well. So to be able to go forward to insurers with a very, very large group that can command highest prices in the process. The Rutgers Health Group vision statement, again, our opportunity to vault ahead of the competition was to be a statewide, integrated Rutgers faculty practice that attracts and retains the best providers and serves as the foundational component of our premier academic health center, an effective partner to patients, hospitals, community providers, and other affiliates, and a leader in delivering consistent, value-based healthcare that improves our patients' wellbeing. Results to date, project management and committee went through a long process. Hundreds of faculty were involved over 18 months, completing their vision and design principles to guide the development of this interprofessional practice and the broader organizational model. This was brought to the Board of Governors, which voted to approve it on April 6th. In addition, on June 15th, the Board of Governors formally approved the affiliation agreement between the university and Rutgers Health Group, because remember, Rutgers Health Group is now a separate corporation. So this is the affiliation agreement with the new Rutgers Health Group as a corporation and Rutgers as a corporation. University Physicians Associates in Newark agreed to join RHG via a 21-4 vote on July 12th, and the papers of incorporation were filed and recorded a few days ago. So we are in the process now of standing up this corporation. Other tasks to stand up the corporation are underway. Committees continue critical work, developing plans for fund flow, compensation models, marketing, and communications. Moving on to Rutgers Health now, that was Rutgers Health Group, this is Rutgers Health. Remember, this had two roles. One was advisory to standardize clinical practices, clinical practice, across all of Rutgers University. The other is a brand. So this is the brand that we'll be going forward with, beginning with advertising in 2017. The brand positioning strategy is shown here, forging the future of health and wellness. The brand positioning statement is that Rutgers Health is revolutionizing health and wellness by combining an unprecedented scope of education, research, and clinical care with a single focus to help people and populations get well and stay well. You can see how that sort of touches on all sorts of things, from our scale to our focus on education and research as part of that, to preventing illness in addition to just treating illness. All of that is built within it, and again, this will be the core of an advertising campaign in 2017. The way we will position, be positioning ourselves is shown here. If you look on one dimension, innovative delivery versus conventional delivery, and the other dimension, episodic or acute care and population care or wellness, we see ourselves in this quadrant, focusing on innovations for population care. That is in contrast to most other centers, the traditional powerhouses of medicine focusing here, innovation delivery for acute episodic care, others focusing here, conventional delivery for episodic care, and a few, just a few, focusing on population care and wellness. So that's the quadrant that we seek to stake out and, you know, going forward, both from an advertising point of view and from an implementing point of view, that's where we will seek to position ourselves. Give you a sense of geography, these show Rutgers Health locations throughout New Jersey. Overall, our over 1,000 clinical providers are located in 16 of the 21 New Jersey counties and over 50 municipalities. Moving on now to the access project that has been underway here, just a couple of slides presenting you some data. In each of these, the light blue, here it is, the light blue is fiscal '14, the dark blue is fiscal '15, and the green is fiscal '16. The access project was started in late fiscal '14. U B H C took over the call center, whoops, you took over the call center in November of 2015, and as you can see, all the slopes are in the right direction, that is upward, and if you look year upon year, everything is upward as well. So with all the efforts that have been made here at Robert Wood, the number of new patients per month has been dramatically increasing. With that, this is another way of looking at it, new patients per month, looking at it over time, again, showing you the increased numbers of new patients over time, and this shows you the financial implications of that. This, where that arrow is in the top, again, I'm having trouble with the scene getting them out, here it is. This is an accounting artifact, but if you ignore this bolus, again, you see the three lines and the increasing revenue corresponding to the new patient visits going forward. External partnerships. Robert Wood Johnson and Barnabas, as you obviously know, merged. This is the largest health system in New Jersey and one of the 10 largest health systems in the US. Now, that's misleading because when it merged, it was $4.5 billion, it's actually gone up since then, but at $4.5 billion, it was the 10th biggest in the US. The next biggest was Hopkins at $4.7 billion, but the Hopkins $4.7 billion includes its academic enterprise. Remember, our piece is $1.5 billion. So as we partner with them, we will be a joint venture with $6 billion enterprise. So it'll clearly be one of the biggest by far in the country. And this new system aligns perfectly with us geographically and with that, with substantial plans to support our strategic plan financially and otherwise. We renegotiated with the master affiliation agreement with University Hospital in Newark. We have a new C I N J agreement with University Hospital in Newark, so C I N J will expand to, that will be signed next week, I think, and so that will, and C I N J will be expanding to Newark as well. We signed a new master affiliation agreement between Robert Wood Johnson Medical School and Robert Wood Johnson Hospital, benefiting both in establishing a dramatically changed tone of partnership between the two. And partnership negotiations are now underway between RBHS and Robert Wood Johnson Barnabas with the idea as part of that, that we will again become increasingly integrated and close partners, and with that, they will provide substantial investment, not only into the clinical enterprise, but into the academic enterprise as well. Almost last, RBHS leadership appointments and searches. First was appointing Senior Vice Chancellor for Finance Administration, Kathy Bramwell, who's sitting in the front row. I knew in recruiting her, I would need a good finance person, I had no idea how much. But the, and next is Vicente Gracias, Senior Vice Chancellor for Clinical Affairs, also sitting in the front row. Vice President for Development, Susan Dalbert, the RBHS provosts, Bob Wieder for Newark and Jeff Carson for here in New Brunswick. RBHS School Dean, School of Health Professions, Gwen Mahon, Mahen, still always pronounce her name wrong, and Shrin Gabriel here, obviously, is Robert Wood Johnson Dean. Director of the Brain Health Institute, Gary Aston Jones. Vice Chancellor for Clinical and Translational Research and Director of the New Rutgers Institute for Translational Medicine and Science, known as RITZ. Ray Pennettieri, based in the Department of Medicine here at Robert Wood. Frank Ganassi, who's taken over three weeks ago as President and CEO of University Behavioral Healthcare, and the new Director of Global Health for RBHS, and Henry Rutgers Professor of Global Health, Rick Marling, who again is based here at Robert Wood, was an endowed Chair Professor at Harvard before coming here. Chancellor Scholars, and we just had a meeting of the Chancellor Scholars before this, are people, some junior, some senior, who I invested in, as well as the school investing in, bringing them to the institution. And so, you know, not only are people And so, you know, not only are people for RHS coming from Rutgers, obviously, the big R in the middle, but from lots of other institutions all around, all around the country. Other leadership searches underway this year, Director for Bioethics and Henry Rutgers Professor for Bioethics, the search is near final, Director of EOC and Chair of the School of Public Health, Department of Environmental and Occupational Health, that too is near final, Director of CINJ finalist have been selected and second campus visits are now planned, Dean of School of Public Health, the search committee has convened, searches that will begin this fall, the Director of CABM, the Center for Advanced Biotechnology and Medicine, and the Institute for Healthcare Policy and Aging next door. Finally, fiscal 17 goals as an initial list. Finalize our capital master plan, it actually finalized last week. Just to give you, be clear what I mean by that, Rutgers underwent a detailed capital planning process, master planning process, that you may have read about in the newspaper, planning for the next 15 years, included in that, you know, all sorts of buildings off our Rutgers. We were essentially left out, much to the upset of the university president, but as I said to him at that point, there was good reason for that. Firstly, we weren't part of Rutgers when the planning began. Secondly, we weren't ready yet. Till we went through our strategic planning process, until we got our financial house in order, we couldn't begin to think about buildings and capital planning. So that process has now been underway for the last nine months. It was approved by the president last week. We'll be presenting it, you know, there's been a steering committee and oversight process and so on, and we'll be presenting it to the deans again at some time in the next few weeks, and then to the Facility and Finance Committee of the Board in September, and then to the Health Affairs Committee in November. But it involves substantial changes, including building, a lot of new building in New Brunswick, including moving the teaching part of the medical school from Piscataway into New Brunswick, and expansion of space for translational research here in New Brunswick, next to the medical school, and in addition to hopefully expansion of ambulatory care space here as well, and renovation of a number of the buildings here. So again, this is master planning at this point, meaning there's no money for it. It's concept, we then need to raise the money to be able to, be able to fund the activities, but the goal and the timing is that this would be done over the next 15 years, and it's planned in five-year increments. We will launch the Rutgers Health Group, which again, as I described, is step-by-step being stood up as we talk, launch the Rutgers Health brand, which will happen in calendar 2017, complete the financial turnaround, including refinement of RCM costs and charges, and bringing each of our units to break even and better. You guys are easily there, way ahead of there already. Implement the new appointments and promotion mentoring and evaluation processes, and continue national searches for open faculty position. One of my refrains with our deans is that, you know, the best people in the country don't all necessarily live in New Jersey. We need national searches. If they end up living in New Jersey, that's great, that's not a problem at all, and certainly we recruit plenty of local people also, but we need national searches to make sure of that. Other goals, complete the existing open searches and launch searches for CABM and the Institute for Health, update the school bylaws across the schools to reflect the new contract, develop and negotiate with the union a new RHG clinical incentive plan that we hope and trust will also be greatly beneficial financially to the clinical faculty, replacing the one-year plan that was put in place last year. Finalize that partnership agreement between, with Robert Wood Johnson Barnabas, and complete school and institute reviews. I strongly believe all programs throughout the institution, RHS at least, should be reviewed every five or six years on a routine basis. We are now completing the reviews. CABM was completed, the School of Dental Medicine is now underway, Shreen is leaving, the Graduate School of Medical Science review is underway as well, and then we'll launch a new set of reviews for next year. Other goals, preparing to submit in January a clinical and, an application for a Clinical and Translational Science Award that Ray Panettieri will lead, increase the number of NID submissions and awards, sponsor an RHS-wide grant seminar in the spring, and recruit tenure-track investigators in the signature and complementary areas. And again, others, I'll leave up for discussion. So let me almost conclude with this virtuous cycle. We can start anywhere, but given the accomplishment, let me start at finance and make Kathy happy. Improving collective financial position of the academic health system, we didn't invent this, by the way, this was kind of from Pittsburgh. Improve collective financial position of the academic health system and make smart reinvestments in academics. Increase, with that, increase research productivity and footprint, strengthen teaching programs, investing in people and technology. With that, improve stature, reputation, improve stature regionally and nationally as an academic medical center with a halo effect for the university, increasing the value of the brand, competing more effectively. That in turn aids in recruiting and retaining the best faculty, offering the highest quality and specialized clinical service lines in the regional market. That all in turn benefits in terms of the financial performance going forward. So this is the cycle that we are on now, and I hope you can see how very much progress we have made on it in the last two and a half years, though again, we still have a ways to go. So I'll leave you with the shared goal, which is to build one of the academic health, best academic health centers in the country, with an emphasis on one. Again, we, an enormous amount of work on this has been done over the last two and a half years. We would not have been so successful without the, the enormous efforts of the faculty, especially this faculty here at Robert Wood. You guys have been terrific and have been enormously successful, it has not been easy, we realize, and the school is now doing enormously better, and we look forward to spending the next few years in building mode. So building programs as well as building, so I don't want to leave the impression that we're just talking about building buildings. To achieve this, to remind you, we need to avoid just catching up and vault ahead of the competition.